Good morning, everyone. We will call this the October 20th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is really kind of a fun day for us, for a meeting. So the first thing we have is a proclamation with the Indiana Extension Homemakers. We will read the proclamation and then we'll go out and do a photo op with them. So whereas the Indiana Extension Homemakers Association consists of over 5,000 active members within 92 counties of Indiana, strive to improve the greatest institution in the world, the home. And whereas its objectives are, one, to coordinate and motivate the membership of the Extension Homemakers Club in building educational programs which are relevant to the needs and interests of Indiana homemakers; two, to study the work and programs and activities which pertain to the development of families, home, and community;
to participate in programs which benefit people worldwide, to strengthen and develop the organizational leadership at the county, district, and state levels, to encourage extension homemakers in their related fields and educational institutions; and whereas the Indiana Extension Homemakers through their local clubs endorse, encourage, and assist 4-H programs; and
Whereas the Indiana Extension Homemakers have been actively engaged in promoting education, leadership development, and volunteer community support at the local, state, and national, and international levels since 1913; that to honor the service and accomplishments of the Indiana Extension Homemakers Association and the Tippecanoe County Extension Homemakers Council, Inc., that October 20th through October 25th, 2025 be declared Indiana Extension Homemakers Week by the Tippecanoe County Commissioners.
So Jan and your, rest of your group, if you'd like to come up, please?
If you want to come here and say a little word, would it encourage me or such?
I've yet to see you ever be shy.
I'm shy.
This is one organization you learn when you're young, you don't want to upset them because they are a bunch of mothers, and they will inform and take, tell you how to do it. But I know they do a lot of work for our community, reaching out to younger individuals, teaching them how to be kids, to become parents, to become people. So really want to congratulate all of you for everything you do. So.
Thank you.
The next thing on our agenda is really, we kind of wish we weren't having to do this, but unfortunately we do, but Mr. Lindblum, who was a dedicated individual for this community for a long, long time, always had time for you to sit down on his chair and you'd find interesting things out. So I know Tracy wanted to say some words, too.
Before I get into the, the reading of the plaque, welcome to Bill's family for being here today. It means a lot to have you here. I first met Bill Lindblum very early in my law enforcement career, and back then it was, you had the state of Indiana, and the prosecutor's office, and the adversary, which was the, the public defender's office. And he wasted no time in setting me straight that we all worked together for justice, and I always appreciated that. And it got through my young, thick skull very fast after he told me that, that day. What I went on to find out about Bill Lindblum was that what he did day in and day out in Tippecanoe County Government specifically for the public defender's office was not a job, it was a calling. I have never known a man who had the level of compassion for the people that he worked with day in and day out. There was the case, but the case, the case was important, but the people, he made them feel equally important, and especially found his calling in dealing with those who were stricken with addictions, and made himself available, was constantly at the forefront of figuring out ways that we could, we could do things better in Tippecanoe County to positively impact those people. He loved this community, he loved the people that he served, and while we are all still hurting with his loss, we know that he has impacted so many lives, and those lives that he has impacted will continue to impact our community potentially for decades to come. So God bless you all, and thank you for, for allowing us to have Bill for those, for those years, because I know he poured his heart and soul into it. And I've got some funny stories about your dad and your husband, too, but I won't share those today. But just a wonderful man, a wonderful friend, and, and he's missed and going to be missed for a long, long time.
So I, I'm always going to miss being summoned over to the office by, by Bill. And, you know, you walked in the office, and of course there were no lights on, and then you had to find a place to sit because there were things everywhere in that office. But I tell you what, we had some really great conversations. I think Tracy said it best when, you know, this was never just a job to Bill. Bill had a great, great, great heart, and all of his clients were very, very important to him, and he was so dedicated. But also, we had some great conversations just about overall politics and life in general, and, and I know in my, my conversations with him, how much family meant to him, and he, you know, he, he, you know, truly loved, you know, his family and truly respected his, his colleagues that he worked with here in the county. And he is, Bill is just one of those people that they're going to be, he's going to be missed for a long, long time.
So with saying that, we have?
So we have a, a certificate that's been put together, and I love that, it's the first one of these that I've seen, great work, Paula and staff, because it actually has Bill's likeness in the lower right-handed corner of it, and that is, that is him. And I might point out that he looks, he looks kind of gruff in that picture, and he can look gruff sometimes, but he really was just a great big teddy bear. He really, really was. So I'm going to go ahead and read this. It says, Tippecanoe County Government in recognition of valuable contributions and exceptional service, this is an exceptional service award given posthumously to Bill Lindblum, March 13th, 1979, to February 11th, 1985, at Cary Home, April 14th, 1986, to April 15th, 2025, with the Public Defender's Office with sincere appreciation for over 46 years of dedicated service, commitment to the children, and citizens of Tippecanoe County, and Tippecanoe County Government, and with our three signatures affixed to it, and again, Bill's likeness. Again, thank you for sharing us with, sharing him with us.
I've never known a man who has less words that meant more to me than Bill Lindblum.
I love that Cary Home is on here, because that's where this all started. Bill and I met at Cary Home, for those of you that don't know that. We were both house parents, and we actually got in a little trouble by the Commissioners' Office at one point because they realized our apartments connected at Cary Home, so they came and put a deadbolt between our apartments. But we met there, and Bill still had contact, we both had contact with those original children from Cary Home, and actually, a lot of them were in our wedding. So thank you, our family deeply appreciates this, and we miss him dearly, and just thank you for recognizing him today.
So we have yet one more recognition we'd like to do this morning. We have a county department head who is the recipient of the 2025 Indiana CASA Director of the Year. So we'd like to welcome Hillary up here to congratulate her. So at the conference in September, she received this distinguished award, and we're very proud of the work that you're doing here in Tippecanoe County, and we're proud of the fact that it's been recognized statewide, how great of an asset that you truly are. So congratulations.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Just thank you, absolutely. It's been great to be with the county for most 10 years, but to be an executive director in department head position for two years, so I sincerely appreciate it. Anytime that I need to come to Commissioners, or even Paula, or Juan, anyone over here, it's been fantastic, so I really appreciate it, truly. Thank you.
Okay, we'll get down to some boring stuff now. So first up is the approval of minutes.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes from our regular meeting on October 6th, 2025.
Second? Motion second to approve the minutes, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, that passes. Accounts payable?
Mr. President, I'd like to recommend the claims dated October 8th, 2025, to October 20th, 2025, be approved without exception.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to approve the accounts payable, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, that passes. Payroll?
Mr. President, I would also like to recommend the payroll dated October 10th, 2025, be approved without exception.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to approve the payroll, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, that passes. We have an ordinance.
Mr. President, I would move that we hear ordinance number 2025-37-CM. Sidewalk construction repair and maintenance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second on ordinance. Doug, would you like to?
Sure. This is first reading of a sidewalk ordinance. It is largely modeled off of the city of Lafayette's ordinance. The Highway Department has long had a policy that, well, I think long had a policy, that sidewalks had to be built to the same standards, and they would just reference the city of Lafayette's standards, is my understanding. And so we decided we needed an ordinance in place to back that up, but it kind of adopts what they have been doing already. In addition, it tracks the city of Lafayette's requirements that sidewalks be kept clean by the adjacent property owners, that snow and ice be removed within 12 hours, and then creates the process by which sidewalks can be repaired if the owners are not taking care of it.
Okay. Any questions for Doug? Anyone in the public like to speak in favor or oppose to this ordinance? It's really just a cleanup, in a way.
Well, probably. I mean, I think the, I think the, you know, keeping sidewalks clean, we've never had anything on the books, I don't know if there's ever been anything, any call to really enforce it. It might be more of an issue, you guys know better than me, but more sidewalks outside of corporate limits than maybe you've had in, you know, decades past, so that's kind of new. The other pieces are cleanup.
And we're only going to have more.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Once again, anyone want to speak in favor or opposed? Jennifer?
Mirtal?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-37-CM passes 3 to 0 on first reading.
Okay. Well, as a second reading at our next meeting, we now have a resolution.
Well, in a, in a month.
In a month.
Yeah, at our second meeting in November.
In November. Okay, resolution, tax sale certificate. Doug, you want to explain the resolution?
Sure. There, you know, we just went through the tax sale process, there's always some parcels that do not sell at tax sale. You're required to make the list available to, to the cities first, parcels within their jurisdiction. The city of Lafayette has expressed interest in two parcels, one at 40 Chestnut Street, one at 1913 Salem Street, so you are assigning the tax sale certificates to the city of Lafayette.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution 2025-22-CM as outlined.
Second.
Motion second to approve this resolution as presented, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, that passes. We have another resolution. Terry, you want to talk about briefly, or?
Mr. Masson has drafted a resolution that was presented to you. There's a vehicle that's titled to the Board of Commissioners, it's under the inventory of the Sheriff's Office, and it's been jointly shared between the Sheriff's Office and the city of Lafayette, and there's been a request authorization to trade that vehicle in for something newer and better. So that's what we're requesting to.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution number 2025-23-CM.
Second.
You want to say something?
I was just going to point out that it's a 2005 vehicle of minimal value, so, and the statute allows you to transfer property between jurisdictions if you both agree to it.
All right, we have a motion second to approve this resolution as presented, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, that passes. All right, we now have an addendum service agreement with Centas Corporation.
I'll just jump in on this one, too.
Go ahead.
This, so two weeks ago, you approved an agreement with Centas. Tony received word that, from Centas, that the state of Indiana really wants these to go through their master contract, so it's the same, it's the same pricing, I believe, it's just going under the, the state of Indiana's agreement that we join in on. And so this is basically what you did two weeks ago, but just under the state form rather than under Centas's, not private entity form, but direct form with the county.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion, we approve the addendum to the service, service agreement with Centas Corporation.
Second.
Motion second to approve this addendum, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, that passes. Any unfinished or new business? Need to be brought forth. Reports on file, we have from the Coroner's Office, Humane Society for Greater Lafayette, Tippecanoe County Public Library, and the Treasurer. Those reports will be in the Commissioner's Office for public viewing. Any public comment?
My name is Kathy Vernon, 43, 49, Weare Ridge Road, Lafayette, Indiana, 47904, 909, and I will sign. Today, I am here as the county council representative for Clarksville. Clarksville has communicated with the Commissioners, and we all received an email message on October 17th regarding their issues in needing a potential loan from the county so they can begin the design process on their wastewater treatment process. I know there's a looming deadline of October 24th, as stated in the email message, and my question is, where are we with this process?
I can tell you that I talked to Sean Klempeter, I think, it's been about a week ago. He's the, he is the financial advisor for them, and learned that, and we'd had a general discussion with them weeks ago about, about their project, and I think we had a pretty good feeling that we wanted to try to figure out a way to help. The one monkey wrench that's kind of been thrown into that, we were under the impression that the, that this would be repaid from bond proceeds, meaning they were going to be bonding for the project, and I found out when I talked to Sean that it actually, it's to be repaid from SRF funds, as opposed to bond funds. And I think they refer to it as a, as a ban, so we need to decide whether or not we move forward under those circumstances. Those SRF funds are not necessarily guaranteed, they're competing for them. So that's where we are right now, we just need to make a decision on whether or not, whether or not we're going to do the same thing we'd intended to do with bond proceeds, with SRF funding instead.
So I guess my question, because of their deadlines and their dire need for this, this money to start the design process, and because the discussion started in August, and they've been verbally told that this is going to happen, they're in limbo. So I guess my question is, is that how and when will you be communicating with them so then they can proceed with what they need if they're not going to get it?
I'll just state on, on my end, I received an email from one of their township board members, I think Thursday or Friday of last week, which is the first of the, the first of an update that I had received on it. You know, I, I for one am okay with proceeding with a process of borrowing funds from one of the rainy day funds, as whichever one is appropriate. You know, so I personally don't have an issue with moving forward with it. Have you, do we, is there much feedback from council on it?
I, the, the reason why the council knows about this is because I've been attending the meetings in Clarksville. I've had no communication out of the Commissioner's Office regarding this. The communication has been me questioning where it is, so because the Commissioners have verbally, or some of the Commissioners have verbally said to the town that it's going to happen, they're coming to me and saying, one of you guys, what are you doing? And it's like, I don't know, that's why I'm here today.
And I think, again, we were prepared to move forward until we discovered that it wasn't a bond, a normal bond issue, that it was SRF funding, and I talked to Jody, I think, at the last council meeting about, about that.
Yes, I communicated with her, and she told me of your discussion that you had with her on, on Tuesday.
So is council going to be okay with the fact that it's not necessarily guaranteed funds?
I can't make a decision, I'm one of seven, so I cannot, I cannot make a decision. I have not polled the council. I know that this is a community that their wastewater treatment plant is hanging on by a thread, as documented in the item documents that you also received on the 17th of October.
If the Commissioners would have had said no, what would they have done?
It is my understanding they would have had to go out for a ban loan.
I thought that's what they were doing. Isn't that what this is through S? It's, it's not a, it's not a gift, right?
It's a, it's a loan, but they would have had to go out to a bank to borrow the money. So they were coming in this, that's why they had the discussion with you guys in August, when the engineers
So not to?
And Sean met with you in August to talk about this process.
Well, and to clarify, a, a bond anticipatory note is a, that is, my understanding was, that was us giving them funds to, to launch the project with anticipation that when the bond was issued
They'd repay.
It would repay us. And then when I talked to Sean a week ago, I found out that's not, that they're not going out for bonding, they're doing this through SRF. And I get, I mean, we want to help them regardless of where the money comes from, but we have to realize then that there is this chance that if we're doing it as a loan, the repayment of that could be delayed based on when, when those funds become available. And that's a, more a council decision.
I just know that they've been waiting since August, and they, they need an answer so that they can proceed with something, because they're under timelines as well, because of the shape of their treatment plans this time, again, as documented by item. So I just wanted to see if I could get some answers today, and I guess I have. Thank you.
So Doug, just to review, the, in order to issue a, a bond, that would be something that would have to be approved by both council and Commissioners?
Well, if we're issuing a bond, it would
I'm sorry, I'm, not a bond. If we're, if we're doing just a short-term loan to
I would think that you don't, I mean, I guess the question would be, do you have money appropriated for this purpose yet?
We don't, no.
And I would guess no, so you'd probably need council to appropriate something for you. Now, in terms of, you know, just to help Kathy out, I don't know if, if you're saying yes has to wait for council, I mean, it would have to be couched in some form of yes, subject to appropriation. I think, I mean, if you got a claim for something now, I don't know if you'd be able to pay that out from the Auditor's, Treasurer's Office.
Right, there hasn't been a request for appropriation.
But in addition to the appropriation process, do they have, does council have to sign a resolution that it's okay to lend county fund?
I, I'm going to give you a lawyer-y waffly answer, I would prefer that they did. I think if you have money for it, you can make the loan because you're the executive. But generally, even if it's not required, you typically get council approval for something like this. I'm trying to remember, feels like there was a similar situation, can't remember if it's Romney?
Romney, right.
And I, I just can't remember if the promissory note went through both of you or just one agency. So anyway, I need to look at that, and I guess I need to, I'm not sure if I've seen it amount yet, honestly.
So I'm going to make sure I'm understanding you correctly, Doug, though, the council could go ahead and make this request without us saying yes yet?
Well, I think you
Versus they're waiting for us to say yes versus they make the request.
I think you have to sign the loan, or the agreement to make the loan. I think that's between the county, and you're the executive for the county, so I think you are the guys who have to make an agreement with the city, but to do that, you have to have the money to make
But in addition to the appropriation process, do they have, does council have to sign a resolution that it's okay to lend county funds?
I, I'm going to give you a lawyer-y waffly answer. I would prefer that they did. I think if you have money for it, you can make the loan because you're the executive. But generally, even if it's not required, you typically get council approval for something like this. I'm trying to remember, feels like there was a similar situation, can't remember if it's Romney?
Romney, right.
And I, I just can't remember if the promissory note went through both of you or just one agency. So anyway, I need to look at that, and I guess I need, not sure if I've seen it amount yet, honestly.
So I'm going to make sure I'm understanding you correctly, Doug, though the council could go ahead and make this request without us saying yes yet?
Well, I think you...
Versus they're waiting for us to say yes versus they make the request?
I think you have to sign the loan, or the agreement to make the loan. I think that's between the county, and you're the executive for the county, so I think you are the guys who have to make an agreement with the city, but to do that, you have to have the money to make that. So in that sense, both of you have to agree. I'm sort of talking around the issue, I think, but I think, I, I think the council could tell the city, or the town, hey, we're going to appropriate the money, we expect that the Commissioners will make the loan, but I think you would have that decision-making authority, and you can tell them, hey, we'd like to make the loan, but we've got to get it appropriated first. So anyway, it, it involves both of you in one way or another.
Any other questions? Any other public comment? Not seeing any?
Motion to adjourn.
May adjourn.